With the challenge just and everything and I think here. It may be a good tidy operation, but I think here we're. To a great extent taking the committee and nullifying it. That's my opinion.
In my opinion, I think we're safeguarding our reputations because if we want the work done and then we're approved in the quotes, we're going, you know. It's people say all the councillors are, 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 you know, making the decisions and who gets, who gets that, that money, um, you know.
But that's our job.
Yeah, but well, no, you know, I agree that our job is to agree the spend and once that's done, you know. It's me, it's up to the officials to, to, to decide, you know, to put it out to tender, get the quotes in, I mean.
It's been, it's always been brought to the committee as like an A B C company where we do not know the identity of the company at the time. We're giving us, we've, we've done tendering and we get the scores for the tendering at the committee and everything. And then we authorize which one of those tenders we think is the best. That's always been the way. According to this, that's not going to happen anymore. The office is going to be allowed to, to do it all without us involvement.
I think.
And that's what I'm worried about.
I just, I, I, I'm beginning to think it's how you perceive something. Because you could, we can read it one way and, and that, and some definitely.
Personal personnel the update, okay, we couldn't have the meeting, but the meeting was to accept the quotes from the health and safety. That we put out, right? And that is exactly what we're doing. That tender went out, it's came back and it went to personnel to me to approve. And I expect that that is exactly what you would do if you say, my order hedge is going to be cut around every allotment in fact, but. I've got it out, I've got the quotes, these are the quotes, I've had two councillors come in, do the quotes with me and this is the results. And then you bring that back and we sit there and you say, I recommend. A C O D.
Does it say that?
That's not going to stress, well, no, but, but you know that as a councillor.
This is the final three days.
Yes, yeah.
So it doesn't have to be in our terms of reference.
If it's full quotes for expenses between 2000 and 10,000, once that's taken out. That to me means that the. Our councillor, which we've always allowed her a, a provision to make, to make decisions between this amount of money. We'll be able to do that all the time and we won't get any comeback.
I'm no expert on finances, as my wife will tell you, but so I've got to ignore that bit. I do not, this idea of ensuring the allotments comply with legal restrictions and health and safety issues, no, that's our job. And I have a great dis-sympathy for what Dennis is saying about being officer driven. I'm really concerned what's going to happen in the near term regarding the injury of those. If it doesn't happen, we have to join you to something else, then we're going to get shoved to one side, there won't be enough time. Our, our job, we represent the allotment holders, they are residents of the town, we're elected as their residents, okay? We come on the allotments committee to represent them and you're taking more and more power away from your elected councillors. I mean, I, the legal restrictions, okay, but health and safety issues. Brendan's done health and safety training, Carl, Tina and myself, that's the four of us who know anything about health and safety issues and. And this is two on in terms of reference, I don't agree with him, the tender, the inspections and this one. But I do have a great dis-sympathy for where Dennis is coming from about how we're going to become like robots.
Just a suggestion is that we put this to one side at the moment and come back to it properly. When you've had a good look at it and worked out, so we just sort of postpone this, this side at the moment. Until you've gone through it and picked out the As and the Bs sort of thing with the committee.
For that one. Go to the officers, very clarification, I think, thank you.
Yeah, half of these things, if we like, have a get together with the councillors that are going to be on the law and Alan, et cetera, and then take it.
Yeah, yes, we can do that, yeah. Yeah, so should we, should we do that one then?
Yeah, okay, so what does have a, sorry, can I clarify, we're having a formal meeting.
Yeah.
After, after man making and we can run through this and so that we'll be presented to the committee. So, just the calendar meeting, the frequency meetings.
Um, yeah, and then we've got the calendar of meetings, is that in this one?
Just the frequency, it's just the stage, your weekly.
So, um, for the next May or year, uh, the committee, what would they like, three, the quarterly meetings or?
Too much folks, did this time, did we change it from quarterly to bi-monthly? So now you want to go back to quarterly.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, no, 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 Dan, no, that's not what I said. I said, would the committee like to go quarterly or, and before I said anything, your hand went up, so I allowed you. I, I said you, you speak, so it's up to the committee, not me, not anybody else, the committee.
May I make the suggestion? As it's going to be a brand new committee, if it exists. Um, shouldn't they make the decision how many times they have a meeting a year? Or do we, which is an outgoing committee, make a decision for another committee that's coming in?
I think that's been done every year anyway, is the outgoing, the committee that still stands makes the dates, I think that's been done every year.
I think it's.
That it's been done.
I think it's, I think it's publicly is to let the public know on the AGM when the meeting is up for the forthcoming year. If we don't set them now, the public do not know when their meetings are. I know they can get changed or they can get cancelled, but for members of the public, this, they would, in our, in their. Hackle, whatever is sitting on their seat when they go in there, they'll say allotments will be meeting, duh, 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 for the forthcoming year. I think that's, I think that other than that, Dennis, you're, you are right, it is hard to say who's going to be on the committee and tell them what to do. But they can change it.
Yeah.
But the thing is, we have to do something now.
It's easier to set it and change it than it is to set it.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree with you, thank you, sorry. So it's quarterly or bi-monthly?
Yeah.
I would like bi-monthly, it's going to be known.
I would like bi-monthly.
Bi-monthly.
And so I don't.
An informal meeting stuck in between somewhere, with the lotman office.
Good pleasure.
Can I have a, a proposal for that, please?
Yeah, I'll send it.
And Dennis the second it. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry. Yeah. All if, anybody against? All in favour? Right, are you unanimous? Right, that's not finished, isn't it?
Kevin, that's where you're allowed to butt in.
Sorry, I've missed my bit. Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm not to, completely wrong. Right, allotment officers report, have we got one from, um, Carl?
I have, I've put it in the slide there, um. I thought that Carl had actually distributed to everyone, and this is, I would blame him here because he's not here. I actually thought he had done it because he had distributed it to the chairperson, but he didn't distribute it to the chairperson at other depths of the committee. So I have to take the responsibility for that. I think it's really, he's, he's really given us a summary and, um, in terms of. He's turned back the water supply, um, that's one of the issues that he, annual task, we turned, we turned it off in November, we turned it on in, in, in March. Um, he talked a little bit about the, the clearing, um, this is the second bullet point and the third. Um, bullet point is ready around the allotment inspections, he started lots of inspections because he does most of his inspections between, uh, uh, April and, and October. Um. So, he's just talked about some of the administrative, administration processes. At the moment, the admin does battle to support the, the process because if Carl goes out and does 20, 20 inspections in a week. Everyone has to be, the, the letter has to be generated, certain dates have to be set for following up. And like I said, we, 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 we short-staffed generally, but we are specifically short-staffed around, around the allotment admin. The amount that does get generated is actually quite, 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 uh, significant. In terms of the other issues, he's carried out, uh, plot clearing, he's, uh, one of the new tenants that have moved in and on, uh, British Rail. Uh, for example, we found a whole lot of buried glass and there's a whole lot of pictures that he's, uh, um. But there, but these are the challenges that we face, so the poor tenants moved in, got a new clean site, done a little bit of digging and they've come across this. And you can just see the extent to which the, the, the glass was buried. Uh, and that's again, that's significant cost to get that cleared in terms of time and, and labour costs. The last thing that Carl has really talked about, and this is one of the issues that we've had, and, and it's one of the reasons why we had to go back and revisit the rules. Is, uh, one of the sites at Berry Road, uh, the person has given up the site and this is actually how they've left it. And there's a number of, of photographs there and you can just see, so the amount of cost to the council with clearing that plot. This particular plot holder doesn't, doesn't, uh, uh, have a deposit, so we can't even use the, the policy sum of £50 to clear that. But this is, this is part of the challenges that we're actually facing. So it's really just a matter of bringing it to the, the, the committee's attention. That hoarding on allotment sites has to be one of the areas that we have to address from a plot inspection side. We've got focal areas of animal welfare, which is a huge issue for us, and it's complicated by the African flu. And the second thing is hoarding on allotment sites because this is probably going to cost us £300 to £400 to clear this. And that comes out of the allotment budget unfortunately.
Can I just say, I didn't, um, I've not seen them.
Did you not send it? Okay, sorry, my apologies. Okay, so I'm, 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 I call it, the, the, I have to check the other half because.
That's right, that's your show.
I thought he'd actually sent the report to, to, to the chair last Friday, my apologies.
Just, just a quick comment, a comment, I mean, just an example. How, I mean, it's not just the cost of what it's going to cost us to do that, it's the time that our people have to put into doing this. And, and that takes away from other jobs they can do, this is just an example of, we don't have enough people really, but anyway, go on.
Like, so if you could just ask members of the public, you've got to cut through and ask speaker system, which, so if I could just ask, ask if you can, uh, take that joke out. Say it in the nicest possible way. Um, yeah, so this is really what, what's, and, and this is one of the issues why we've got to be very careful. And our plot inspections have to be very specific around, around addressing some of these issues. And this plot had a fire about 12 months ago.
That's the same one, is it?
And that's it. I'll, if there are any questions on what Paul's written. Uh, I can forward them to him and ask him to respond to the committee.
Yeah. Keep up the good work.
Yeah.
Um, right, nine eleven, update on allocation of pots and waiting lists.
Okay. Uh, on the slide there, it just sets out where we are, and this was at last Friday. There are fully applicants on the waiting lists, uh, 10 applicants have been contacted since the last committee meeting. Resulting in eight applicants taking up the offer of a, of a half plot. In terms of vacant plots, Manchester Road, we've got four, four full sized, uh, vacant plots and the numbers are listed there. Uh, on, on British Rail, we've taken site 08 and we've halved it and that's the places have been allocated. On Berry Road, there's one full size vacant plot, BU18, and on London Road, there's another 28. So Carl, every time we have a vacant block, we look at halving them so that we can, um. Work through the waiting list a little bit quicker, uh, and also our plots are. Very large, uh, and so for a new, for a new allotment holder coming in, it's actually is quite difficult sometimes.
Any questions for yourself?
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, nine twelve, financial report for the end of the 21st of March 2022, that's in your, your pack.
In terms, in terms of the financial reports, um, overall, our income is up. Um, and that's partly due to, we had an increase in, um, allotment fees because of the implications of that. And the second thing is, is because we, when we, when we take a full plot and we halve it, we actually end up with, uh, more allotment revenue coming in. And that's, that's shown there. Uh, we haven't done the exercise of forfeiting any deposits yet. And that exercise will be done in the next month or so, and that's where the plot has been vacated. But we haven't refunded the allotment holder because the plot wasn't in a satisfactory condition and we've incurred costs doing that. In terms of expenditure, I put the, 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 the figures below, we are below budget quite significantly. Um, and we're going to be even more below budget when we've done the allocation of the pest control because the pest control contract runs from. February to, to, to January, uh, essentially. And so at where we paid the amount in February of this year, it's, it's been expensed in full. Some of that will actually be treated as prepayment, so the final results, which will be tabled at the next allotment committee, your expenditure will actually be lower.
Right, so we haven't spent our budget, so we've got a lot of money. Are we allowed to carry that over or has that now been lost to us and gone to the general fund?
I think in terms of your terms of, your existing terms of reference, you can make recommendations to reserve, to reserve any unspent money.
But do we have to have a reason for doing that?
I would think so. There's one, there's a thousand pounds of the contribution to reserves. We want to start building up a little bit of a, a major reserve, that hasn't gone through, so that, that's one of the, one of the use. If you wanted to increase that reserves, uh, that would be a big decision of this committee.
Do you want to put £2,000 away in reserves, committee decision, do you want, what, at least what I'm asking, and do you want to? Have you got a plan in place where you need to do something that you might need that money? Because you have to have a plan, can't just do it.
Can't, yeah, that's right.
You know, if you.
I don't think there is any.
There isn't, so I, I, I would suggest at least putting some more money into your reserves.
Micksey?
Why don't you just, we just lose it?
Yeah. It's a shame to lose it.
I would, I would lose it, do it, it's all my.
Well, we have lost it, but, um.
Can't be ring-fencing for some polydonna or something. Improvements.
Could be not, yeah, I was going to say, what about, um, must be some improvements, it's a road, um, on the road, we're doing that, we've talked about that before. Um.
But could, could it, could it be put in reserve to say that in. May, we're going to get contractors in to clear all the sites to get, uh.
That's what I was thinking, can you do that or is that not a plan?
I think you could, you can do that.
Well, that's, yeah, I think that, then Carl's got a clear start for the new year, i- i- if we could do it.
So it's likely that you'll have, so if we put two and a half thousand away. Because I would think that you're, that you're going to come out, uh, with about two and a half thousand pounds under spent.
I'm all right to propose we put that money away so we can clear the sites and get as many, um, sites allocated, plots allocated as possible. Um, and, and save on Carl's time because otherwise those plots would deteriorate. And I think mine should be to get all, all the sites allocated as quickly as possible.
A shorter proposal is that we put the money away, as you said, put the money away for.
Yes, I agree. Your second.
I'll second that, yes.
Now you favour? Majority, thank you very much.
That's agreed at full council or just, is that it?
No, it's your terms of reference.
Terms of reference, I'll swing in later. In terms of reference, I'm sorry to bring it, maybe. Um, so any other comments or queries or anything from the budget? Right, so shall we move on on that one then? Thank you very much. Um, we've done that one, we've done that one. Right, approval consolidated allotment rules. These are the rules that we've been working on with the, um, with allotment holders, not the tenants. Um, yeah, so we just need to approve that these are what we're going to do, or if there's anything you'd like to, um, put in there on anywhere at the moment.
I would like to propose that we accept it, using that part of course.
Um, can I just ask a question, there's emails going around that some bits have been missed off, what can you do, just add them?
That was me, that was me, yeah, yeah, I thought about the Harris fencing and that on it, yeah.
Because that, so do you expect to then, then adding?
It can be added in, it can be added in.
From the process, you should just discuss anything you want to add it, and then, and then approve it right at the end. So there were three comments made by the, by the chairperson, if I can speak, and, uh, the first one was really about the height of hedging and fencing, that's already in the tenancy agreement, so we don't need to duplicate that in the rules. The second comment was to prohibit Harris fencing.
Yeah.
Uh, so that committee can, uh, will decide that, and the third one was to say what fruit, fruit cages are made out of, whether they are, um, wooden, with, wooden and netting, or whether they, they're limited to that, those materials. So those were the two proposals by the chair, chair, chairman, in addition to what's in the document that I circulated yesterday morning.
Well, as Dennis has proposed it, he needs to say whether he agrees with them to be added, I think. Them two items.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we can, you know, if you want, we can reform our proposal so we can, uh, add those amendments. I shall reform my proposal so we can just debate whether to add these amendments, so.
So they will take on, um.
Oh, it's a bit.
Right, is that?
What is?
Chris does his nose up. So are, are we with them to amendments, are we, or put in, they're not amendments, they're put in, um.
You need to read them out again, what they are.
Harris fencing.
Harris fencing, um, yeah, no Harris fencing. Obviously the. And obviously the, um, but we've got to be careful on that one, because round bees, they're going to put the Harris fencing for the health and safety, aren't they? And the net on. But no, no Harris fencing and fruit, fruit cages to be made out of wood and nets. And I'd like to thank one of our allotment people for mentioning that whilst, whilst on official run, because it's actually in the rules beforehand.
Sorry.
Fruit cages, because it could, should be constructed from wood and netting only.
Should be or must.
Must, should be, constructed.
Well, should be means that you can do what you want.
Must means you have.
Must, must. Right, then we've got, yeah, it says here, yeah, so we go must.
I can read just.
Structures shouldn't be attached to boundary fences, yeah. I think there's some of the better rules that we've just saw on this one, so.
So I'm going to add to the rules, I think fruit cages must be made of wood and netting, and of netting.
Under the exception of the beekeeping area and no Harris fencing.
Yeah, and Harris fencing is prohibited, uh, unless, uh, unless.
Mission for bee hives, yeah.
Uh, unless.
Why do you have to do Harris fencing around bee hives?
Because it takes it up and the, and the bees fly up, so if it's covered, it's, it can fly through Harris fencing. Would it have the net on it, so it takes them up, so they fly up high and not, not?
What takes them up?
Because Harris fencing is so high, because it's high and you've got the mesh going up it, it takes the bee, the bees go up.
They have mesh hanging on the.
Yes.
Because. So they go up instead of swarm.
Yeah, so it, that's, that's an exception to the law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So under clause eleven twelve, we have really made a, uh, an exception for, for beekeeping. Can I add just maybe Harris, Harris fencing?
To take the height up, yeah.
Yeah, so eleven twelve, if you look at eleven twelve.
Yeah. A lot more gardeners for beekeeping will need to erect a boundary fences that are higher than permitted, so that would be the Harris fencing amount.
Could I ask the question, this is a layman's view now, why don't we like Harris fencing? It sticks the high, you can see through it, people can make stuff, it's not many.
I think, when it, sorry, Dan, go on.
No, I'm, you're sorry, you can only answer that.
I was going to say, I think it was, it was sort of a, a, a no-no, because a lot of people were leaving it at the time when we first came on, and it was, it was just a pain to get rid of, and, yeah, lifting it up and moving it and then moving it somewhere else, yeah. And because we brought in the, um, because then the committee brought in that the fences should only be three foot high and Harris fencing, as you say, six foot.
No, I appreciate that bit, but we also did it for visual safety, so we can see across the allotment.
Yeah, but I think the Harris fencing was too high, it's better at a level, when you look at.
Fruit cages, it's wood, everything to see through them.
Wood netting.
Right, netting, framing, wood.
You have the frame and then the net.
Okay, I just don't, I mean, I must have been, I.
Do you remember the American on the Manford Road, his whole allotment is a netty, don't it? But because he's got loads of fruit in there, basically his whole allotment, and we said to him, you've got to lower your fence, which he done, and he attaches fruit cage inside of all that, but it's nearly, nearly up, all of his allotment, wouldn't it, it's covered in netting.
I'm, I'm not convinced of that, not using, I mean, it's, every time I've been in allotments and seen Harris fencing being used, it's used in a sensible way, with netting over it, bits and pieces and beside, it doesn't rot, because that stuff does, it's, I don't know, okay, I'm going to sit out on that one. Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine, so, so what, you, you accept this? You accept these without the recommendation, or with one of the recommendations, that Harris fencing around bee hives or?
I mean, I've been, the Harris fencing around the bee hives has got to do less health and safety, so I can, no objection to that, but I don't necessarily agree with Dennis' way with the Harris fencing.
For fruit cages.
On, on the allotment.
It's just for the making recovery now, they're going to go back to where they was before, aren't they? Yeah, that's your decision, your decision, then.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if we allow Harris fencing on, I mean, just three of my, our council, if we allow Harris fencing on the sites other than the beekeeping ones, we'll end up with six foot fencing around everything. So, uh, instead of our three foot rule, so if we're going to allow Harris fencing, we, we would need to adjust our three foot rule.
So, good. Right, so are we going with these with an amendment, or are, are we going as they are, which be quite happened, you know, the Harris fencing, this was my, my input. But if you want to go as they are, with it not in here or anything, then that is completely up to the committee, um, I, I, I say I don't vote, so.
Oh, it's a democracy, so we said we tried to commit votes.
But, you know, so, so we prohibit Harris fencing, do we have a?
So are we prohibiting for Harris fencing or not?
We do, we do.
Put your hands up, everybody.
Yeah.
If you, if you want to, I think, sorry.
Because it's going to go.
So yes, prohibit in, yeah, it's true, yeah.
And then fruit cages must be made of wood and, wood and or netting.
Wood and netting, yeah.
Netting, yes.
I've got a proposal for that, right, have we got a second, Dan?
Is that my proposal, is it?
The wood cage, uh, the.
I can go for that.
All in favour by us one? That's the majority, good.
Formally approve the rule, please.
So can we formally approve these, um.
Rules for both to accept.
The rules with their two exceptions.
So are you proposing it now?
I don't, I don't care, I'm just approving it. He said, can we approve them, and I'm going, yeah.
Well, we need a, a proposal and a second before we.
I suppose we accept the rules as they stand.
Can I, I propose we, uh, with the two amendments, thank you. Who's seconding it?
The vote, please.
I'm abstaining from fee, are you abstaining?
Yeah, I think I said it Harris fencing, I really strike, so.
Right, so that's done, thank you very much, um. Revision of fee charging to review the introduction of pro rata billing for new tenants. This is something we, we talked about, the unofficial, um, this, yeah.
So if, how we currently stand at the moment, is you pay a fifth, your full year's fee from the eleventh of October, and I'm looking at current, you correct me if I get my dates wrong, the eleventh of October to the thirtieth of June, is you pay a full fee, so if you get on the twenty ninth of June, you pay a full fee up until the tenth, tenth of October, and you have to pay another full fee thereafter. New tenants that, that take a site from the first of July to the tenth of Oc- October, which is mainly the grain season, don't pay anything at all. So there seems to be, so when, when we had our meeting, in the fifth informal meeting, we said that we would put this on this meeting's agenda, and it's ready to propose whether tenants pay a pro rata share, and there's two ways that we might have to do it, and the reason I say that is because we also, we have to look at the legal agreements, we have to look at our software, so if we agree on pro rata charging, we're saying you pay, you, if, you, you pay basically a year's fee from the date that you join. It might be done in two bills, it might be done from when you join to the tenth of October, and then you pay a full year, and then you'll pay up until when you leave. Um, it, it depends on what, what we can do, but the original proposal will be reduced from annually, if, if subject to our systems being able to do it, if we can't do it annually, then we do a pro rata up until the, the eleventh of October, and then everyone moves on to a full, full year tariff.
Brenda?
Well, I think quite frankly, um, on allotment, the, the big, big beginning when I, of the year, when I would think I would start, would be February, March, as you're saying, I'm not going to pay anything, I think, oh lovely. But I think you should pay by monthly, you, you pay monthly, so if you worked out, uh, there's twelve months in a year and it was ten pound a month, then from July to October, I would, I wouldn't have to pay the year, I'd just pay the ten pound a month from July to October. Do you see why we say that is pro rata? Yeah, and I think that is the way to go, because otherwise, well, they could go on there, usually for that six months, I'm not being funny. And then you, on top of that, you've got the clearing, but, um, what's that? Because they go, oh, I don't like this, when they're gone, so I think they should be charged. Pro rata, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I was going to say, it could help people that want to, want to do that, have an allotment space that maybe cannot maybe afford the whole deposit and, and, and lark altogether, whereas if they can pay it in the pro thing, it's a lot easier for, for, um, future tenants or whatever, yeah.
Can we talk with the, uh, with the admin, extra admin, it's going to, of course.
If, like I said, I, I think it actually might reduce the admin, if we can stagger the, the, the tenancy dates, would mean that, that, that everything would then run, uh, twelve months. Uh, so we would have to put out, at the moment, we have to send out two hundred and eighty letters in a very short space of time. If it ended up being staggered, it would actually be, it might be a lot easier.
Okay, so you don't see any problem?
No, no.
So, okay, we've got, uh, we need a vote on that one, don't we? So I need to propose, please, Brenda, I never got a second to please. Dan, all in favour, all, all in favour, yeah. All in favour, Ben, thank you. Um, right, we are nine fifteen and we're on, um, correspondence, but I think that will go below the line, or?
Uh, there, there are just, um, um.
Yeah.
Um, um, issues that we need to consider below the line, um, they're not, they're really around about water usage, et cetera. Um, so if we can discuss those then, we also have a, an official letter of complaint, which we also need to just quickly check below the line.
Isn't that, you're straight, it's a public watch, it is, terrible.
Uh, it's my kind of scheme, sorry, I, I stole this presentation for someone else.
So.
Never steal.
What's going to go below the line, committee officers update.
This, I think since the agenda's been released.
Uh, community engagement. Okay, anybody, no, okay. Um, and now it's exclusion of press and public to consider resolving that pursuit of, to the public for this administration meeting, that nineteen sixty, the press and public be excluded from any of the remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity could be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidentiality nature of the business to be discussed. Are you in agreement?
Agreed.
Very much, right, thank you very much for coming.
The one that you used for breakfast, which is about that long, instead of that back long.